Okay, this is an open session, public meeting. It's subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Uh, let's see, 7:15. Approval of the meeting minutes for...
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the minutes for September 19th and 26th.
And you, only you and Tom were there?
That's right.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have October 4th?
I hadn't had a chance to look at those, but...
Okay, we can hold those. We have expenses for selectmen for $11.88 for mileage.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And why do you want two signatures on this?
Because that's what they want.
Yeah. I'm sorry, on the second, the second tab page requires a signature because I can't approve my own.
Ah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have next the reappointment of Patricia Jackson to the ZBA. Term to expire November 30th, 2019.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
Anything to say?
Nope.
All in favor?
Somebody's willing to serve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can sign that one. Agreement of consent election for the DLR, Division of Labor Relations.
Did you mean to skip over that Maplewood one for now?
Nope, I didn't. Never mind. Uh, we have the ACO from Maplewood. Have you read, had a chance to read this?
The letter from, from us?
Yeah.
That you wrote? Yep. I just had one question, whether you wanted to add the routine while testing.
Um, I thought about that, but what I've asked for is a review of the thing as it goes along.
Okay.
But actually, that's what I was thinking about. I could add, um, it, I was thinking about it when I put it together, but it didn't really fit anywhere. I could perhaps add like a two-sentence paragraph here that said, you know, we're, you know, interested in incremental protections that could be afforded by the ACO and are particularly interested in the possibility that has been raised with regard to test wells and...
Well, since that's one of the things that they represented as being a positive for doing this.
Yeah, okay. So shall I add that?
That sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, it looked fine. Glad you didn't ask the clerk to write it.
Exhibit A.
And you'll attach the exhibit A to the, you don't have to attach the whole...
Their request, the letter of request?
No.
It references protocol which forms exhibit A.
The settlement agreement?
Oh.
Has that one-page review protocol in it?
Okay, yep.
So if you take that one-page review...
Just the one page?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I gave them, I gave them the docket number and so on of the, um... Yeah. Uh, yeah, did I?
You titled it like interway, but not...
Oh, yes, no, no, I gave the, uh, I gave the...
Mail, 1340, 115.
Yeah, I gave the docket number. Um, and a lot of that is not terribly...
Yeah.
Uh, but...
It's the protocol they need.
But the protocol talks about our review, so I'd like to attach just that one. It's just one page.
I'll sneak away during the meeting and fix that.
Okay, so now what it says is inserting a second to the last paragraph. "We're interested in the incremental protections that will be afforded by the ACO period. In particular, we're interested in the provision of test wells on the property that has been raised by the proponent, and we would like to review placement and testing procedures as the details of these are proposed."
Okay.
Okay? So we'll just add that in.
Okay, sounds good.
I give that to you.
Okay. Uh, number five. Division of Labor Relations, Highway Labor's Agreement for Consent Election. So we need to sign here.
I move the person to our vote to recommend consent election, that we execute the agreement for consent election presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You don't get to sign. And finally, we have a letter to DHCD regarding DDS Group Housing. So this is in regards to, DHCD is the...
Department of Housing and Community Development.
And the DDS Housing is the housing down on Boylston Road with the four?
Yep.
For the...
Right now, they're counting none of those units as being occupied and counting towards our subsidized housing inventory, but the Housing Partnership says that all four are occupied.
Yes.
So they should have been, should be counted.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on this?
Well, this is a letter to them.
Yeah, move, move to issue the letter. Correcting the status of the DDS Group Housing on Boylston Road.
So if they accept that, then we'll have 9.55% affordability, just a smidge under 10.
Yep.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have, and we have the Estebet Valley Collaborative wants to request Monday and Friday mornings in the town office space. Is this the Kibble program?
It is.
Do I hear a motion to...
Have we already agreed to?
They wanted Fridays originally, and now they need Mondays and Fridays.
Oh, okay.
For the school year.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nope.
Nope, no, you're all three, yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, please.
I'd never go against Kibble.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're gonna lose the Kibble vote if you vote now.
Okay, at 8:15, we have the Maya grant application between the school and the police chief and the BMS Makerspace project update. Somewhere in here.
One time you'll see.
Yeah, really? So we have two grant applications. We've been working with the school quite a bit over the last few years on safety and security. The school had a security audit done, so Maya has grants available, up to $15,000 for two grants, one project of $10,000 and the other up to $5,000. So we actually are kind of doing a joint grant application for both this building and the school building. So one of the things that's come up a lot in this building and when we used to meet an FAC and department heads was obviously security and panic-type buttons or some way if something happened to an employee in the building for them to contact us if they couldn't get to the phones or something happened, you know, it was dynamic and happened quickly. We have the same issue in the schools. You know, in order, it's similar to here, in order to call 911, you're dialing eight for an outside line, then 911 and to try and get things through. It makes it very difficult. So there's a product called CopSync 911, and it basically works like an app on your computer or your phone. You just click on it and it sends an emergency notification immediately to the police department.
I just got the new car that has one of those.
Yeah, but beyond that, it becomes... It becomes a complete communication tool as well. What we have seen historically in mass casualty and emergency events that happen in schools and public buildings is for us as first responders, we have difficulty getting the information to communicate with the people inside. So what this does is just by hitting the button on your smartphone or if it was on your computer, it sends an alert, sends an alert to the dispatch center, and then beyond that, the alert would get sent to whatever staff we choose on the police department to have access to at the fire department and also all of our in-car computers. So it'll let us know where the incident is. The person who sends out the alert, if they can, they then can start typing messages of what's going on, and that comes to everyone that gets the alert directly.
But the first message is, there's a problem at a particular place.
Particular place. If it was here and Mary hit it, it would say at the selectman's office, town office building.
But if Mary was down the hall, it would still say the selectman's office.
It would still say the selectman's office.
Would you have a phone app?
There would be a phone app and a, and a computer app.
Right, and then for school staff, it would be, you know, if they wanted their device, their own phone devices that it could be on there, but it would also be on their computer. So if they're teaching whatever and there's something going on, say on the first floor, it'd be an announcement so that the staff would be able to see it and know to go into that.
And then as the incident unfolds, generally, fortunately, these incidents are over relatively quickly, but then there's a big job for us in clearing the buildings, checking in and re-unifying everybody. What it then allows people to do is to check in. So if a teacher, you know, we teach that, you know, when they flee the building, some may come here, some could end up at Northbrook Village, some could end up in the center of town at 19 Carter, you know, we just want to get people away from the threat. Teachers can then check in, you know, I have all 22 of my students, I'm at Northbrook Village. We can then tell them, okay, you can, can you use, you know, Pleasant Street to Central Street to Linden Street to come to the town offices for reunification with parents? You know, we also might get a message, I'm trapped in room 201 and I only have 22 of my 23 students and, you know, Sally Jones was in the hall when this started. So now we know, okay, we have someone we have to look for, we have someone we have to find. When you go back and look at the, at the incident that occurred at Sandy Hook, there was actually a staff member barricaded in a closet for over two hours while the police were on the other side of the door. So this person is sitting there, can hear voices, doesn't know what's going on, and they couldn't come out. So this allows that, that communication with people. On the public safety end, there's a lot, it goes a lot deeper. So for us, it allows, when our alert comes up, we can then have attached to it blueprints of the school, an emergency response plan, links to cameras in the building, which will kind of tie to the next grant. So it gives us a complete tool for managing the incident. So what the grant would do, we're applying for $5,000 for that, that would cover both of these buildings for the installation, basically that the time for the company to come out and program the computers and some of the monitoring on the police department end. We pay $150 per computer, I would be able to pick up the remainder of that through, through our budget.
And for us, for our school buildings, for the first year of implementation, she said they could give it to us for $2,400 for the initial implementation, and then it's $1,800 each year per building.
Per building.
So if you wanted to expand this to, say, the library or, it's expandable?
Expandable, yeah. So we're actually, we're looking beyond Berlin with this. This would be going on in Boylston and at Tohoto as well. So we really want to encompass the entire districts.
Right, the difference is that Tohoto with the Maya doesn't, even though they have Maya through their insurance, they don't have this portion of it through the municipalities. So the region would be, it would just come out of their general budget to begin with, but the Boylston Elementary, we're doing the same thing with the town of Boylston is to get the services.
So the second grant, which is for $10,000, is for upgrades to, we have a camera system here on the public safety side of the building, we have software to monitor and store the video. What we would be looking to do, it's two pages, just each one, it's a simple application and then we attach the quotes.
It appears to be the same page for both of them.
Did I?
Two of the same thing.
Did I give you the same one?
Yeah, it was identical.
All right, sorry. I'm saying there's a camera one, sorry. So we have IP-based cameras here. There's two cameras at the school that are IP-based, the new cameras that have been installed at the doorways. We would be looking to add two cameras in the hallways of the classroom end of the building to begin with, and then depending on if there's any money left, adding one camera here to outside of the lobby, up, probably up on the second level here for the public safety building, I mean for the town hall. And again, that...
Here, looking down into the lobby.
Or looking as people are coming into the door from the lobby. And that's kind of a multi-faceted, you know, reason for that is, one, it's, it's just if there's an incident going on, it gives us eyes in the building, but also protection of assets. It's very easy in looking with regional dispatch and what's going to happen with, you know, the building not staffed for something to walk away. I mean, all our assets are at risk, our data's at risk, so we need to start to do something to, to protect that. And cameras are a simple, relatively cost-effective way to do that. Part of this progress, process, I met with the company that we would work with, and they're looking at a wireless link directly from the school to here to stream the, the video right across. So it, uh, it's nice that it's available to us through our insurance company, we're already paying them, it's nice to get a little bit of money back from them. You know, there's been, unfortunately, just since Sandy Hook, there's been over 186 school shootings around the country. They don't care how big the school is, they don't care how big the town is, it happens everywhere, anytime, and, you know, we need to unfortunately prepare for it. You know, the hope is that we're never gonna need it, but it'd be nice to have it if we do.
Okay, questions?
Good to be proactive.
No, I'm, it was very complete presentation. I don't have any questions.
So this is for a maximum of $10,000, a limit of 15, remember?
So it'll be 10,000, yeah, so, and they divide it up, so you could do a single $10,000 project. We met with our Maya representative, and what's nice to know is he's on the review board for the grants. And he explained that we could have one project that could be a $10,000 project, and the $5,000 could be used for multiple projects, but we reuse that, end up using that for one project as well.
And there, is there a matching aspect?
There's no matching. We've used these, the last few years, we've used the Maya grants on the public safety end to upgrade some of the cameras on our part of the building. What's nice is it's not a matching, nothing actually ends up getting paid out of our budgets, the invoice is again sent direct to Maya and Maya pays the vendors directly.
Always a good thing.
It makes June very happy.
I would move to approve application for the two grants as described.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I can't fill you in on anything on the Makerspace, I'm sorry.
On the Makerspace.
Well, I wanna, I would like to also point out that I use Weatherbug. And now, if you go, I get a picture from the top of Burlam Memorial, and it was very beautiful, all the leaves had changed and everything, so people should be using Weatherbug. Mary has to sign it.
I have that app on my phone, too.
The one that I switched out.
I like to watch, at first they had it, so it was like on the, on the playground, we're like, no, no, you can't do that, so then they, they moved it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually looked at that with the company that came out to look at the cameras, like, oh, we could tap into that, and then he goes, oh, it's pointing up in the air. I'm like, yeah, we don't want it pointed down at the camera.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate your, your work on this.
Ladies?
Thank you.
So I actually have some parents that wanted to come forward and talk to you about the select, about the Makerspace, and I offered to be here with them while they did this, and so they're really the ones that have been taking this full force, and it's a great room, it's a great space. I was just there today and watching the kids all in there and making their own imagination creation going on, so I'll let both of you speak on this. All right. So we'll tell you quickly what it is, because you probably have no idea.
First, let's introduce ourselves.
Yes, all right, I'm Julie Lee.
I'm Julian Moody.
I'm Tom Andrew.
Tevele.
Chris Keith.
Nice to meet you all. Okay, so we decided to, last year it was brought up at a PTO meeting, if we could come up with this Makerspace idea, so would a maker, do any of you have any idea what a Makerspace is?
Well, my son, who's 26, wants to... I said, no, it's for the elementary school students.
No, but it's interesting you say that.
We'd love to get him involved.
Because the whole maker idea started with adults.
Yeah.
And then transitioned sort of down and then into schools, but it started as an adult-based thing, and libraries, just people getting together and building stuff and then collaborating and networking. But how we got into the school was a parent had brought it up, let's get these kids in this space. So we were awarded this room, it's, I don't know if you've ever been in the school, but it's the old sixth grade classroom, so we actually are fortunate because we have a whole entire room that we just have all sorts of supplies in, so anything you can probably, that's safe, that you can imagine.
We're working towards unsafe stuff eventually. I am a screwdriver.
But the premise behind it is kids can just go in there and there's no real conformity, where they're just given the opportunity to just build and to tinker and let their own imagination sort of bring them to a product. Then we have the whole tech aspect, too, which is, they have to sort of know as well, which she certainly has more experience with.
So I work for Make Media, which puts on all the world maker fairs in New York and the Bay Area, and then we just had one in Rome, Berlin, and all over the world. But Dale Doherty, the founder, was kind of the one that based this tinkering movement, which is why it started with adults, was that somehow throughout our schooling, we just stop as adults letting ourselves play or tinker or do something as an outlet, and how it's a productive, it's productive beyond technology and STEM, but it's just productive to allow yourself to be a complete human being and to do, just to do something and get engaged in it, and you come up with one idea and it leads to another and another and another, and that's kind of where the make came from, because you're always making something, you don't know what necessarily what that step is. So a lot of our clients are like Arduino and Raspberry Pi, snap circuits, little bits, so they're more of the tech, 3D printing, which all of those tie in really well with the STEM curriculum, but having it in the school is kind of finding the happy balance between feeding our population and aligning it to, having it play two roles. So there's a Makerspace, but then we also have the needs and the curriculum to develop the STEM aspects as well. But we would love to get community involvement, and we know, especially being in this area, so I'm new to this area, well, a year or so, but we have a lot of our makers in our database. Boston's a huge area for it, the Boston Worcester spread, there's so many companies and there's so many people that are involved in that maker movement, whether they're aware of it or not, so we just kind of wanted to present it to you and open up that communication with the community, because we would love for it to have community involvement in it.
These supplies that come in actually are coming in from people within the community, and so they're not, you know, in your line budget items to say we need, you know, 500 of these, it's, and that's the idea of it. It's, it's not necessarily people's junky things, but you know, there's, there's things in there that they've been very strategic with what they could put in so that the students, they go in and maybe this week there's all kinds of paper towel rollers that they're using, but next week they go in and there's all these linking logs that now they're like putting things together, and it's, I'll give you an example of one of the things that happened that I saw today. There was a second grade classroom that they had read this book about this young girl who was an inventor, and she had invented all these things, bless you, she had invented all of these things, but she kept having all these failures, and the moral is you don't give up, you just keep trying, and you make the best, most imaginable thing possible. So after the story was done, they started thinking about it, and then they went up into the Makerspace, and it was, they have to make their most imaginable invention that they had, and they were using bits and pieces of the story, but they were also being creative. The kids were just around the entire room doing all different things, and not one thing was the same, not, and that's the beauty of it. It's, it's almost like a progressive movement in a way, because they're, it's child-centered, it's student-centered, it's their interest, it's their inquiry, and it helps to build that inquiry-based, and that's really the idea of Makerspace, is to be create, more creative with that inquiry-based mind, so I think... Especially now, I think, with education where it's...
And it sounds like you also love using these for something other than pushing buttons.
That's it. You got it. Filling in a bubble or something. You got it. Where you're...
And there's a lot, I mean, the Raspberry Pi and the Arinos, those are, are you aware of what a Raspberry Pi is?
I probably have a different idea.
It's a little kit, and it has everything you need in it to make a computer. And then you can hook it up with like...
Oh, I got it, okay.
They're tiny, you can hook them up with Arinos, which is used a lot in robotics and Maky Makys, but it's a lot of bringing those tech elements into the hands-on and kind of allowing them to, like, Maky Maky and Squishy Circuits, they both work off Play-Doh. So it's kind of bringing the tech into the tactile.
Do you have any Raspberry Pi?
We do have two.
Really?
Yeah.
Up to fifth grade?
But, um, we need a class set, which we'll work on.
Yeah, so Carol Costello got a grant, so a lot of through the, a lot of the tech stuff came through this grant, some really nice equipment that the kids will have access to, which is great. It's just, it's very exciting, you know, and it's exciting to see the teachers actually, you know, going into it, the parents getting involved and setting it up and getting it prepped for the children, you know? And it's funny, because I'm, I'm actually on, in one school, that Boylston's doing it as well, and it's funny, as the teachers have gone into their Makerspace, and theirs is much different than, than yours, they, you know, and just watching the teacher say, I brought my kids into Makerspace, you should see what they have done today, you know, just to listen to the excitement between the teachers of what their children are doing, you know, it's a, it's full circle, you know? And it's cool because this has been really community-rooted. The idea came up, we appealed to the community, just, we just want to collect supplies, and people just came out of the woodworks, and they were giving us all sorts of things from A to Z.
Well, I think it's great.
And we just kept collecting and sorting, collecting and sorting, and then people are saying, we'd love to come in and help do a solar unit with the kids, or we'd like to do, you know, so we're, so we're here, we're, you know, we're eventually gonna get here, but it's all just community, you know, rooted, which is awesome. So what we'd like to do is have a sort of community unveiling of the Makerspace, where we have the children and their families come in, K through 5, and then invite you all and then other community members and just sort of check it out and see, you know, what it kind of really is. Because it's, I mean, we can sit there and explain it for you, you know, once you're in there and then you can really see it, it's, it's really awesome. I think what they're looking for is some ideas from you as well of how to get more of the community aware and, and what this event would look like, is there a particular time that maybe you would think it would be great? One of the pieces, you have a special town meeting coming up, right?
That's true.
So maybe you could do it before the special town meeting?
Be in the hallway.
In the hallway, or, you know, you have, that's where you're gonna get a lot of community members would come in, not necessarily just parents, but people, invite them, put up, you know, let them know that this is happening, that might be a way of getting the community members outside of the parent clientele. A way of like a flyer, is that what you mean? To invite, yeah?
Or you can have some projects up on the table, show some of the stuff that they've made.
Good idea.
We also have, you know, Christmas in Berlin, and places like the 1870 Town Hall and 19 Carter are open, and if, you know, you wanted to make some displays portable, it would be...
Have a classroom.
Or have, or have a classroom, you know, I mean, obviously, it's a different thing to open up the school on a Saturday, but those buildings are open, and you might want to think about if you had, you know, a movable session or movable products or whatever, you know, incorporating it in that, because there are people there in the center of... it in that, because there are people there in the center of town, people, you know, go from place to place. And I think that, that's another opportunity. It also, if you did something like that, it also might open up possibilities for, you know, a session of this that happens outside of the school, in one of those buildings. And more focused on adults, yeah.
Nineteen Carter, they have their Wednesday mornings at nine o'clock. They have the coffee chat.
Or the 1870 Town Hall, for that matter.
Go and bring some information and go in the coffee morning on Wednesday morning at nine o'clock. Let me know, I'd be happy to go. I always put it in my calendar and go every now and then.
That's a good idea. All right, great.
Well, it sounds like...
And you know, the other one is the first Thursday of every month is senior citizens at the church. And you can call up and book yourself in. And that's a wide audience that you would probably never really...
Yeah.
Yeah, speaker for that event. They do that every, every month.
Right.
Yeah.
So the first Thursday, where is this?
It's at First Parish.
First Parish Church.
Maybe lunch or something.
But before lunch, they have, yeah. It leads into a lunch, but they have a speaker. They do a little, there's a health, blood pressure kind of thing. But you, you could find out. I don't know who's...
You know what else too?
Yeah, I don't know who's in charge of senior citizens.
In December too, the school goes, the...
They sing.
They sing. And they perform their instrumental and they do chorus. You could probably use that time too, since the students will be there, where you could maybe have some of their products and talk about what they do. I know they would love to come in and...
Yeah.
And help and be a part of that. There's a lot of senior citizens that would love to be in the schools.
I've spoken to many that said that, yeah.
So that could be a time that they could see it and learn too, in between, as Catherine Denny's trying to get the chorus and the band and resituate. It'll be a good time, a good time filler.
That's true. There's a big transition time there, yeah.
A good filler.
Perfect. Great. Super. We want you to be available.
That's a great idea. I have a maker kid who does Arduino and does Raspberry Pi and...
That's awesome. See local.
I don't know.
See volunteer.
You could take her name and give it to her.
Only if he doesn't have to talk.
Right, well, yeah. He wouldn't have to talk a lot.
I'll, I'll talk to him about that.
Julie will talk for him. Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for taking the time and putting us on.
Thank you. You're a great project.
It's fun. It's, it's a lot of fun. To watch the parents have fun and excited and...
Curriculum rigidity that's there now.
Yeah.
That's what it is. It gives them just a little bit of freedom outside of that.
Yeah.
Because that's not going anywhere, regrettably. But, so this, this, no, it's just okay.
It's just the messenger.
It's right, right. No, 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 no one's fault. But it's nice to have this other, so they can, you know.
Great. Well, thank you guys for your volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, ladies. Yeah, yeah, I'll reach over. I'll reach over. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, well, at eight o'clock, we close the warrants.
Oh, from here, from this building?
She's gone. I don't think she, that we, we got yellow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So do we have anything?
You're not really going to executive session, are you?
We might.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll put it on just in case.
Well, we have 20 minutes until our eight o'clock closing. So Article Five and Six, which is rescinding the, oh, the fire chief disappeared.
You want him? He's right out there.
Rescinding what?
Rescinding the article at the special town, at the May 2nd, 2016 town meeting. There was an article that was approved for $51,575 for the replacement of breathing apparatus and air cylinders. And he would like to rescind that and instead use that money for the purpose of replacement of the breathing apparatus compressor system.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if rescinding it and then having another article, does that work? Come in and...
Well, we can sort that out. We'll put them both on for tonight.
So tell us about your breathing apparatus.
Okay, well, we did an evaluation of all the breathing apparatus and the compressor system, because again, X number of dollars was voted at town meeting. It had already been in motion before town meeting. So we just had everything all was tested. Everything tested, was repaired, fixed. All the breathing apparatus works okay. We don't need any additional masks. What we do need is a new compressor system, because this one's 20, 25, 30 years old. It came with the old station and it can't go up to 6,000 pounds pressure, which some of our bottles are. It can only go up to 4,500.
That's a problem.
Well, you can't fill them all the way. So anyway, long story short, it's in, next year, we're going to apply for a federal grant to try to replace all the breathing apparatus at that time. It has to be two cycles out of the NFPA. Yeah, the system where they, where they make changes. So at that point in time, it'll be two cycles out. So we have a better chance of getting the breathing apparatus through that grant. So said we can best use that money now.
Won't be covered by that.
Well, it could, it could potentially be covered by the grant as well. But it's something that we need now. And, and you know, as the technician came and said, "Hate to have this run too long, because they doesn't want it to blow up." But, but it's old.
That would be undesirable.
And then you have to fix it or replace it then. So we're getting some additional pricing and it looks like it could be a little bit less than what we had asked, where we asked to just rescind the first article and put the money into the, into the other one, same amount of money. But it might be even actually a little bit less when we get some more quotes. We have one right now, so.
Okay.
Works for me.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, as we review over the next few days this specific way, I mean, I wonder if it's, it's, you just vote to close, to return. It would seem to me you'd do the same thing as you'd do with any special article, is you just close it out. But then that would go into the general fund and we could say...
See, this is money that was already appropriated to expend this year.
I understand.
So...
So if you closed it out, it would go back in the general fund, but it wouldn't be available as free cash.
That's true.
Did it come from the public safety though?
Yeah, we need to...
Oh, it did. It came from Highland Commons Public Safety Fund. So we can just return it to that and then you can just take the money back out.
That makes good sense. Yeah, so let's leave it at that.
That's a good way to say that you're just changing what you want to do.
Transparency.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so the wording on the second one needs to be to, to transfer from Highland Commons Public Safety. It has the...
Well, you can make, you can make that motion under this article. And until we, I'd leave it open until...
When we get it all figured out.
This needs to be, needs to return it to the Highland Commons Public Safety Fund.
Oh, doesn't it say that?
Well, it says to rescind it.
Yeah, why don't, yeah, I think it would be better to return the money.
Actually, could we do it on this side?
Yeah, you could even put it on the...
Put it on...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's, that was what I was saying, is if you close out...
Right, so we could put it on Article Two, close it out, and then Article Six would spend it from public safety.
I think that's probably the appropriate way to do it.
I just thought because it was a, it was a article that was specifically voted. That's why I thought you'd rescind that.
All of these, all of these are special article monies that for one reason or another we're not using. And so we're returning whence it came. So that's all we're saying, is we're not going to use that special article money for that purpose.
Oh, okay.
And we will return it whence it came. And then this, so I think you're right. That's what I was trying to say imperfectly before.
You could make some kind of statement where you did return money to the public safety.
Well, we have one giant article.
Right.
So we just add another line to it.
We'll just add another line.
That says Article such and such of this past town meeting, return to public safety. And then you have this one, which takes the same amount of money out of public safety. Okay?
That's simple.
Yeah. All righty.
I like it when it's simple. Anything else?
Nope.
I think that was it.
I don't think so.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks.
So, did you get that, Mary?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to go into executive session? We have 15 minutes to close and...
Yeah, I don't think we need too, too much time. We could do it, I mean, otherwise we'll just take a break. But, you know, but I'm willing to go into executive session.
Okay.
This is executive session for the purposes of acquisition of land by the municipality. Andrew, aye?
Boomen, aye.
Keefe, aye.
Sorry that you just settled down.
But we need to close the warrant.
Move to close the special town meeting warrant?
Second. All in favor?
Hang on. Anybody have any last minute submissions? Okay. All right, just a few to ask. Okay? We'll take the vote.
We'll take a vote.
Sorry to interrupt. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And open session, if you want to talk about the...
Number three, aye?
No.
We have, we have an article for the 1870 Town Hall. We have an article that closes out a lot of warrants. We have two conservation land articles. And we have an article that has closed out money that the fire department got for one thing. And then this article takes it, takes that money and spends it on something else.
They, at the last annual town meeting, got $51,000 for breathing apparatus. They've now decided they actually need that for the compressor equipment that's associated with the breathing apparatus. So we're adding that one to the closeout and then we're at, and returning it to the...
Highland Commons.
The Highland Commons, you know, Public Safety Mitigation Fund. And then we have a separate article to vote that same amount for the new equipment.
Okay. At 8:05, Rich Mariani is going to come and ask us for permission to use a metal detector.
Yes.
At the Bullard House.
And I'd like to ask my friend and associate, Dan Tivo, to come up with me. Dan's from Sterling. We have been hunting with these wonderful little machines that sense metal in the ground.
Okay.
Particularly coins, like the one I have in my hand right now, which is 200 years old, short of two years, 1818. If you look on the bottom and just kind of angle it in the light, you see that that was a 200.
Hold it, hold it over here.
Go back to the back of her.
There's 200 years of history in that coin that someone in Sterling, that's where Dan found it, dropped 200 years ago, long before any of us were here.
So what is that coin? Is that not...
It's a one penny.
Yep.
It's a US one cent.
Really?
Large cent. Yep.
That's when a cent was worth something.
Yes. And that's really all it's worth right now.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you can see the condition that it's in.
Yeah, most of the things we find aren't of value, monetary value. They're just historical relics. Very interesting.
Yeah. So we would like...
Is this other stuff?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of other things here and they're mostly old, very old.
Spoons.
Curious and historical things and...
Wow.
Skeleton keys and these musket balls.
Really?
Fired from muskets.
Wow.
We found some of them in Lancaster.
Wow.
To Freeborn Nursery.
That looks painful.
And, yeah.
It would hurt. This is a Prussian coin. This is a 1758 Prussian coin. I found that over by the Sawyer property in Sterling. Colonel Sawyer had property there for fighting in the Revolutionary War. And we did have Hessian mercenaries in the area. They were imprisoned in Rutland. I like, I like to think that that was dropped by a Hessian mercenary, but that's not necessarily so. It just happens to be a Prussian Empire coin.
Yeah.
But it's from that era, so.
Neat.
So that's what's neat about it. So we're here to request permission to hunt the Bullard House property and 17, I mean, 1870 Town Hall property. I had talked to Barry prior to coming here in regards to the historical commission and what he thought. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think he agrees that it might be very interesting for us to find whatever artifacts we can find there. And the deal really is, the town has first right of refusal on anything that we find. So if we found, you know, some really historical coins and you guys, you want to keep them and put them on display, that's perfectly fine with us. We'll probably find some 1971 dimes that really mean nothing.
But they'll be all silver.
Yeah, they will be. And the only thing that we ask is whatever the town decides they want to keep, that we get, take a picture of it and just put it in our own photo library. It's kind of a catalog on things that we found. We think it could be very, very interesting. I understand that there'll be some construction in that area at some point. So that ground is going to be disturbed in any event. But when guys like us, who have been doing this for a while, disturb the ground, it's, it's like being on a golf course. It's, we have a small trowel that will cut maybe a 10-inch circle. Even if it was a beautiful lawn and we just move the divot this way, whatever we find is like eight or 10 inches down. Sometimes it's not even that far. Then the hole is carefully filled in, the divot put back on, tamped down. And you'd almost never know that we were there. We, we have hunted the North Grove Historical Society grounds, right on Route 20. The building's right there on 20. And Sterling Historical Society, front, back, all around the building. And...
So tell us, how do you hunt? You take this and you...
Yeah.
Sweep?
Correct. Yeah. These, they, they fire a frequency into the ground and they pick up metal. Metal has its own frequency. They pick it up. Metal, iron has one sound, silver has another, gold is somewhere in between. For purposes of demonstration, here's a silver quarter. 2015, it's of no value.
Silver.
No, it's not silver.
Well, silver in color.
64, I think, was the last silver quarter.
Hear that low sound?
64.
That's iron. That's just iron. It could be...
Yeah, you're getting the rebar in the concrete floor.
Yeah, you're probably getting the rebar. But watch what happens when I go over the quarter. Hear that high pitched bell?
Yeah, it sounds like amusement park.
We saw it when we hear that.
Dig for me. And then there are, I'll, I'll kill the noise now. We, they have, there's a scale. It'll tell you up to, up to 99 what the probability is that you've got a gold coin or a silver coin or whatever. Anything under what, Danny? 40 is usually just iron or trash.
Something to that. So it helps us distinguish between the trash and, not always, but relatively close.
They're very accurate, they're very accurate machines. You can almost, you can almost tell what you're going to get before you get it out of the ground. You can get pretty close. Except bottle caps are pesky things who disguise themselves as valuable things.
Yeah.
So we're here to ask your permission to hunt that property.
Thanks. Barry?
Yeah, I, I think that with the construction that's planned, it's really a good idea to find what can be found, because by the time that property is all disturbed from the construction project, it's, you know, we're probably not going to know anything about what was around anyone near the surface. Because we're not going ahead with the path down near the house right now, we'd suggest we reserve about 20 feet near the house that we would keep intact for now. But beyond that, I think it's, I think it's fine to go ahead with this.
Okay, so...
Might find a few things. And chances are, if we don't do it now, we will never find those things.
And that's areas likely to be disturbed over the next few months if we are going ahead with the...
Project.
With the project, so. I make a motion to approve the hunting.
With the following provisions.
With the, with the provisions that have been presented.
The town has the first right of refusal for any artifacts found on town properties. And that otherwise, you'll be at least permitted to photograph your findings for your own treasure hunting records.
Yes, we agree with that. Yes, we appreciate that.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes, thanks. Could be a lot of fun.
Find us a million dollars for that 1870 renovation, please.
Yeah. Yeah.
We hope so. Um, one thing, Barry, we'd like to get started as soon as we can, and the weather's going to be terrific tomorrow.
Go to it.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, we've given the approval.
Tomorrow and Wednesday. Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Before...
Barry, thanks a lot. Yeah, I'll see you after that.
Before we go into the interview, I think tomorrow may be asking just about that letter.
That who?
Tomorrow may be, just ask your letter.
Yep.
We just signed it, um, this evening.
Excellent.
I gave it to you, um, with the Exhibit A. Can I have a copy of it? Is that possible?
Yeah.
Do you have a copy? Or do I?
Hang on. I thought I passed it down that way after I signed it. We did, it's on the table here somewhere.
Oh, wait a minute, here it is. Right here in front of me.
Is that the edition that you...
Exhibit A, yep.
Mm-hmm.
So you want a copy?
It's all signed?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You can have a copy. All right.
All right, so I give you everyone's, I just handed it to you. Here it is.
Okay.
Although, boy, she was... Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I don't know what happened to the rest of mine.
Well, we can share.
I'm missing, I'm missing one resume. Hold on.
It's tough when you're any, I always do that, I get...
I have so much paper.
Yep.
This one's...
Have a good evening.
Not coming.
Right. This is approvals, this is appointments. Okay.
So how are you, Leanne?
Oh, well.
That's good.
I'm going back to my daughter's wedding.
Actually, come on up.
Which one?
Caitlin, I noticed.
Oh, my.
They're married Saturday in Bristol, Rhode Island.
Ooh. Okay. Please come.
Whereabouts in Bristol?
Um, right downtown Bristol.
Oh, that's lovely town.
Right along the water. She married on a dock, right along the water's edge.
Yeah.
With her dad's sailboat there.
Bristol and, Hannah used to have swim, um, meets at Roger Williams.
Oh, yeah, and that's where my daughter and her, her now husband went to school.
And I, I have a fear of bridges, high bridges.
Mount Hope Bridge.
And the first time I took Hannah to Roger Williams, I missed the turn, and once you miss the turn, there's nothing to do but to go over the Mount Hope Bridge, which is this very high, very skinny, uh, bridge. And so, and then not only did I have to go over it once, but I had to turn around and go over it twice.
Yeah, yeah, it's a scary bridge.
Yeah, it is a scary bridge.
It's not, it's a little scary sailing underneath it as well.
Yeah.
Well, so we're here to interview you for the Inspector Land Use Clerk position. And maybe we could start out by you telling us a little bit about your work experience?
I worked 11 years at First Parish Church, two different ministers, secretary initially, and then added responsibilities and worked as the administrator there. Um, and I've been working over at this 1870 Town Hall for four years now. Started off two years as a secretary there and promoted to manager, managing the building. And most recently, temporarily working in the position you're interviewing me for.
Now, if you got this position, would you still be the manager at 1870?
I would like to be. I would like to maintain that job.
Tom?
Well, Chris, in this case, we, you know, we've heard very good things about you in your temporary position, and, uh, I've actually had, um, the pleasure of working with Leanne in a number of capacities, so I, um, I'm sort of at a loss for questions.
So you can attend the ZBA meetings at night every month?
Yeah, I attended the one this past Wednesday, and so, yes, that's, uh, don't really love being out at night, taking notes, but, but totally doable. I'm willing to do that.
And you do understand, sometimes when they get into something really sticky, that can be, you know, not forever, but...
Right, but...
For a month or two can be really...
Continue, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Are you having any issues with, what the heck's the name of that program?
Geo.
G-O-T-M-S?
I am not, and I'm actually, the first thing, uh, something came up today that I haven't had to do yet, and I navigated my way through it and was successful. Someone was having trouble filling out their application, and I knew there was a way for me to go in as them and talk them through it. And, um, I said, I'm not going to go text Julie right away.
Were they there with you, or were they...
Over the phone, they sent me a message.
Over the phone?
And made contact initially by phone, then sent me an email with their sign-in. And so I just, I'm very logical, so I logically walked my way through it, pulled up their application, called them, and we walked through it on the phone and it all worked out. So I'm pretty, it's a pretty straightforward, simple system that I've become very comfortable with.
So you have Julie as a backup?
Julie as a backup, um, my...
That's very nice of her.
Yeah, so she, yeah, she was great. Her boss had, you know, he understood that I might have some questions, and so I try not to bother her, but if I have a quick question, I can send her a text or response when she can. Which has been great to have that backup.
She's been very, um, self-sufficient, extremely.
Yeah, it's one of my, one of my, um, positive attributes.
Then do you go home and take it out on Rich? I'm just kidding.
No, and actually, in the very beginning, it was, it was some really crazy days and I had things of, okay, what did I, what did I do? I just stepped into a hornet's nest. But then there's other days that are quiet. And as I've become comfortable with the position and understanding how things work, it's been a lot better. So, no, no blowups at home.
Do you have any questions? Well, I think if you are liking the job...
I am.
And, um, I worked with Leanne years ago, too, length and...
That's right.
All those other things, so...
Now I feel like I have to say, I work with you at the Bristol.
So we all have to accuse ourselves, right?
I'm sure if you're enjoying it and that you're most likely very capable of handling some of the issues that are in the questionnaire.
And I'm delighted to hear what you said about Geotrans, because I think that's the first person I've ever talked to who thought, who said that, you know, it was okay, I like, you know, it was straightforward. I've heard more moaning about that than I would have thought necessary, so that's, that's great.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. All righty, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
We'll let you have it shortly.
Okay, thank you.
And we have one other applicant at 8:30.
Mm-hmm. You have anything else on the agenda?
Nope, we're done after that.
Okay. Wow.
Sorry, I thought I timed that pretty well, but...
No, it's, that's good.
Okay, anybody want to look at miscellaneous correspondence?
So I assume by miscellaneous course...
I, I hope tomorrow, tomorrow morning, when you go to this Neshoba meeting about double poles, I hope you pound your fist and talk about the broken poles that they attached another pole to.
The one at the corner by the dump.
Jonesy.
It's like a Jones Road and, and South Street. It's like an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I second that.
Um, I just note that, um, we did submit the AG's report regarding Boston Business Services to M...
To Maya.
To Maya. To Maya. Um, to see if that would be sufficient to make our claim. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's pretty determinative, and it's the result of a forensic audit by the state, so it will be interesting to see what they say, but, uh, I think we should push it if the initial, even if the initial one is, you know, we need to wait. I think, um, you know, a criminal trial is beyond reasonable doubt, but a commercial claim is just more likely than not. It's a different, you know, different standard of proof, so I think we, we should try to push that and try to make our claim.
Okay.
That was the only one that I could see that, um, next Tuesday we're meeting with, it's next Tuesday, right? Oh!
Next Monday.
No, Tuesday with the, um, planning board?
Oh.
Actually, I will not be able to make that, I realize. I have to go, um...
I didn't realize, I wasn't sure I could make it either.
Okay. Good. I'm glad we had this conversation, because I realized, I was thinking it was Monday, and, um, that's actually what I was checking in the, um, meeting minutes, because I saw it was Tuesday, and I wanted to be sure, but it was also on the calendar, it's Tuesday. Um, I have to go to New York first thing Tuesday morning. I'm in New York until, um, Thursday evening.
Are you going to be here?
Let me check. That would be the 25th.
Yeah.
At 8.
Um, I think I can. I was thinking of meeting my daughter in Boston, but...
Tell her you'd rather interview Economic Development Committee candidates.
No, I would.
And Judy, you think that you can...
Yeah, I mean, I could be there.
If I, if I can't, is that an issue?
I think there's joint appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, but we...
So we need a quorum.
We can, no, you can only, no, I mean, you don't necessarily, if we were, if only one of us could go and Judy participated in the interviews, we could vote on her recommendation or feelings later on. I mean, it's a joint appointment, but it doesn't have to happen at the same time.
Yeah, meet on Halloween, that'd be your next meeting. You could do it then.
Yeah.
And we are meeting on Halloween?
Well, unless you don't want to.
You have to wear costume.
Were you going to go trick-or-treating?
No, but I usually get booked to sit at...
You have to wear a costume.